Dr. Genia. Time is up?
Yes, yes, yes.
Please go ahead.
Yes. Dear participants of Summerfield School, a respected special chair and distinguished special panelists, ladies and gentlemen, I feel privileged to extend my warm welcome to all presented here for a special session of Field Summer School on Mountain ecosystems and resource management. Let me introduce myself. My name is Evgenia Kapice and I'm an associate professor of Yaroslav Moudri National University and I will be a moderator of today's special session. It is an immense pleasure and privilege for me to be here with you today as a part of an extraordinary event which this summer school definitely is. During the past 10 days, the respected faculty members, experts, delegates of the Summerfield School were examining the mountain ecosystems in different contexts, in the context of human development, natural resources, analyzing the principles of managing natural resources and peculiarities of governing the resources for sustainable conservation. On seven technical sessions, a number of illustrative case studies from a wide range of the current natural resources across the globe were presented in order to understand how the current international and national development systems elaborate and process to sustainably manage the valuable natural resources in the mountain landscapes. It looks at the joint efforts of all the participants were aimed at developing practical approaches, knowledge and skills in order to meet challenges of sustainable use of natural resources globally. And me personally would like to assume without any shape of doubt that the goals that were outlined for this training program have been successfully achieved. For a deeper look into the outcomes of the Summerfield School, I would like to invite Dr. Hasrat Arjament, the founder, president and the program director of the Grassroots Institute, Canada, to present the review and reflections of the Summerfield School as well as to share his vision of the future roadmap. Dr. Hasrat, please.
Am I visible?
Yes, we can see you.
Okay. Oh, great. In respected Chair Professor Pervis, the moderator, the special panelists, the delegates, participants from all across the world. I'm really very glad and happy to be with you today in this last special session. It was a really wonderful time to have all of you together and representing various parts of the world, almost all the continents and a large number of countries from different corners of the world. Thank you very much again for joining this special session. So first of all, with the permission of the Chair, Professor Pervis, I'd like to present, I'd like to present the progress in nutshell in about 10, 15 minutes. And thereafter, I will present certain points as a blueprint for the next two, three years. And then panel, panelists, our respected panelists will be invited by the moderator to express their opinions, expert opinions and their vision. And this should be a shared vision instead of the solitary efforts of the Grassroots Institute or by my team. So let me begin with this snapshot of this program. Okay. Is it visible to everyone?
Unfortunately, we cannot see anything, doctor.
Is it okay now?
Still no. Looks like Dr. Hasrat is experiencing some technical issues. Alessandra Pilari, you are saying something, right? Probably you can get unmuted if you would like to help. Yes, okay, sorry. Yeah, Dr. Hasrat, you are back with us?
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
So can we speak now or later? We have to wait, so we don't understand before.
Well, I suggest Dr. Hasrat to try a little bit more and try to share particularly unmute your audio because we don't hear you. Or if you want to pass on to others, we could wait for your...
Dear participants.
Please wait a bit half a minute because my connection is going again and again of the Zoom.
Dear participant, there was some question from you regarding when you are to take part in sharing your vision and your opinions. And according to the plan that has been sent to you yesterday, you will be given the time to share your opinions after the presentation of Dr. Hasrat and respected Chair of our today's special session, Professor Pervis. So like I would ask you to check the email if you can. If not, I can give you some time limits during which, like some time period after which you are given this word, it will be in approximately 20 minutes.
Doctor, hello, can you, can you see?
No, we can see only, yeah, now, yeah, now we can see, right?
Okay, right. Screen, okay? Can you see the screen?
We can see your screen, yeah.
Okay, I, okay, I will speak now, please, sorry, I'm sorry, it was a problem yet, okay. So let me start this, this special session and... Oh, one sec. Yeah, summary school, actually, summary school was conceptualized and conceived in the March, March 2019, almost two and a half years ago. So this journey really was very, very interesting, undulating journey, I should say, with the hopes, disappointments, also sometimes the frustrations and then hopes again. We see that, we all know that the COVID incidences have really were the major obstacle in organizing it in physical in Ukraine. But finally, in the month of May this year, we had taken the decision of to conduct this, this program online. And, and you see that today we are here, okay? And we are concluding this program. This program has got attracted a lot of people from across the world with, with their, you know, contributions, with their lectures, with their participation, with their listening to different sessions, commenting in the chat windows, writing in the Google group and also informally and bilaterally interacting with each other. I mean, this platform has been explored by different people and we had also called everyone to explore and, you know, interact with each other. So I should say that the, this, because of the contributions of everybody, I am going to explain one by one. We have got very good progress. As you know, the first thing is the, I would like to share with you is the, the, the development of the partnership, how the partnership was evolved. Because this program was really, really not possible without the partnerships and the way the power partnership evolved, this was really commendable. So constant efforts were required and, but at the same time, there was a constant assessment of different partners from our side and also the retrospection of our approach. Whether we went wrong, whether we were correct, whose fault was it, who's the, what strategy worked well and what did not. So this was a continuous, continuous assessment and retrospection from our own side and we really have assessed ourselves more than any other partner. Participation also was, was really wonderful. I mean, the concept of the participation, initially there was a limited scope for different partners because, because of certain reasons, because of the number of partners was very limited, only 40 partners, participants were allowed for the physical program. And when the, it became, it came into the online mode, then obviously the participation mode was expanded and the scope was widened for different participation. During this process, we have also observed some kind of inertia. The organizations, different organizations were having to partner with the small group and the new group like us. It is because the people usually test when you enter into the field and you enter into the market, you, I, I'm, I'm using these words, not exactly in terms of market, but as a symbolically, I'm using this word. So the people test you, whether you are going to really sustain or you are going to just cheat the different people. So because this was really, yeah, a, a, a new idea to have so many partners, partners and collaborators in a summer school. Usually what I please the summer schools are done by one institution or the only few, few, few institutions come together and do all that. So this, but on the contrary, this, this program was, you know, inviting a large number of the partner, partners, okay? Yes. So according to our observation, the universities and the research institutes welcomed first of all and then followed by the NGOs. ECMod was the very prominent organization which welcomed us in the first, on the first and then they, they extended the help. Also, they committed the financial help when the program was to happen physically in Ukraine. Mountain partnership also, you know, helped immensely time to time by just, by, you know, disseminating the information, communicating this program, advertising this and that. So it was a wonderful contribution by these two global institutions and global organizations. A largely the international mountain networks did not respond, which are existing, there are many networks in the mountain areas, especially in the Europe, Europe, European area, so they, they did not respond well. Even two organizations, you know, they engaged us for like two, two months or three months and then finally they said, okay, we are not ready to come and to cooperate with you. So many international organizations, even, you know, they threw our email communications into dust, in any way. So this journey, I mean, this happens with all, this, nothing happening new with us, you know, this happens with everyone. So I'm just sharing that how, how, you know, thrilling and how, I mean, difficult it was to evolve. But finally, we had managed to, you know, get large number of the partners, like 31 are the universities and the research institutions and, and 35 are the collaborators, which are mostly the NGOs and the local concerts from 22 different countries. So you can see this chart, this we had floated everywhere of this group. Coming back, yeah, along with this, I just wanted to show you just one. Okay, I'm not able to open that, okay? Leave it. So, yes. So next thing is the, was the, who will teach? Initially, when we conceptualized, the syllabus was prepared and the various friends from different parts of the world were just, you know, contacted whether they will be able to contribute through their lecture. So about 20, 25 faculty members agreed and we put on their profiles on the page site. But now when the online board has been, you know, launched in this month of May, so majority of those faculty members who were really interested that time, they backtracked and they just declined, you know, to be the, to sustain as the faculty members, only five or, five or six of them are still continuing. So but the challenge was that how to bring in different faculty members to teach it? So luckily, the idea came that why don't we source the faculty members from the different partners and the collaborators? And this idea worked well. So we see many, many faculty members were, you know, nominated by the partner universities, institutes and different NGOs also, and the, in the form of the exports, they have contributed very well. And many of these faculty members, you know, were, were passed from the journals because we have our different journals, we have the number of people from different parts of the world are the editors and I mean, they are in the editorial board, they are in the advisory board. So we just requested then and many of them have really contributed. Some friends also came and some friends also mobilized their networks to, you know, fetch some, some people on certain topics to deliver the lectures. And believe me that without their, these contributions and voluntary contribution it is, nobody has, you know, even claimed that I want some money for it. So except one professor from Japan. So I'm sorry and he's, he, he was very old friend of mine and he just asked the money for it and then he backtracked, lastly, only because of this. So identification was also done of certain people and then the, the topics were, you know, sent to them and announced also in the announcement form and some people came. So finally, 98 faculties have delivered the lectures as of now, except one person, I mean, I will, I will tell in the next slide. 54, you know, exports and these faculty member, very senior professors, associate professors, experts, NGO leaders, they have contributed as the chairs and coach, especially the contribution of co-chairs, I mean, the moderators, they were, contribution of theirs is very, very commendable. So, so this way, and they were all off from 30 and 36 countries, you see the list here and different parts of the world they come from. Coming back next to that, how we engaged with all these faculty members, it was really interesting. I mean, this, apart from the syllabus and curriculum was prepared, but the faculties were also matched, who is having what expertise and, and this was really meticulous job. This was not, you know, even a one month job, it was really continuous job, you know, searching, matching, mismatching of the people and then intensively communicating with them. Thereafter, once the faculty members were decided in stages, I mean, not, not at once everybody came in and then we just flooded and then we finalized, no, it took a longer time. We had drafted the guidelines for each of the faculty and also drafted some guidelines for the chairs and co-chairs for moderating the sessions. And moreover, these guidelines for delivering the lectures especially were circulated to all the faculty members and also the delegate participants. I don't know how many of the people have read these guidelines seriously, but I suppose that majority of people had read all this stuff. But I must confess that the great contribution of these faculty members, experts, chairs and co-chairs is really commendable. There was nothing possible without the great contribution, voluntary contribution of these people. I must salute my whole institution, organization and team, salutes all these people who have really sacrificed that, you know, contributed that time. Because it was not only the delivery of the lecture, but also in the background, preparing for it. Preparation required a lot of time. I remember that many organizations refused for partnership because they categorically said that they need some resources to invest so that the preparation for the lecture, lecture can be done and they are not able to do that. Therefore, they refused for partnership. And finally, I, I, I must share with you that only one faculty member out of 98 has dropped because of some very intensive family problem. Only one faculty out of 98. We have got 199 lectures, so we have got 108 lectures, only one lecture could not happen. Rest, all the lectures were delivered by these able faculty members and very motivated and inspired people. Likewise, the, among the chairs, out of 27 chairs, only two chairs could not come. But, but the, but the co-chair, I mean, the moderator was present, so the presence of the moderator or the co-chair was very critical. Sometimes the chair, if could not come, we have somehow managed, okay? So this was the progress of these faculty members, okay? Now I must move to the participants and quickly because I am just running out of time. We have got 40 application in the first phase, 30 where people were selected, finally 12 of them had joined the online board. In the second phase, I mean, in the, of the online board phase, 92 nominations were done by our partners and collaborators and 15 people had applied as the self-sponsored candidates, okay? So these 92 persons and 15 together, almost it comes around, the whole data comes and also 12, 12 persons above. So there comes around 190 delegates and two of them dropped. So finally, 117 were in the chart. But the observation is that 20% of these delegates have dropped almost. And the reasons we know, we will share with the partners also, all these reasons, what are the reasons? I'm not really convinced with the, with the reasons given by these delegates. Many of maybe having the genuine problems, but really I think the genuine problems, some, some people have given other kind of the excuses anyway. Okay, let us see, now come to the, these participants, how we engaged with the participants. So we had also very intensively engaged and I'm sorry, I apologize that we could not give enough time as it was envisaged in the physical program that was to happen in Ukraine. So that time, the number of participants was 40 only maximum and we planned, we envisaged that we will be engaged intensively with their papers, with the research, preparations, training, you know, all that. So because of this online format and limited limitations and constraints, so we could not engage very much with these people, but probably in the coming three months, so we will be able to give some comments on the papers and will be able to help some way. There were some certain misunderstandings also, some people have withdrawn because of misunderstandings, although it was very pretty explicitly clear in the communications and written documents. But unfortunately, many people did not read the documents clearly and they misunderstood because of the certain, you know, grape wine communications and this and that. But we are really committed for our commitments, whatever we made, so we can help further. Similarly, coming to the learner participants, we opened for the learner participants and there is a huge diversity, there are the professors, there are the students, there are the bachelor degree, there are the post-docs, you know, doctoral of sciences. Among these learner participants and they have come from, I mean, all together, all both type of the participant, they come from 70 different countries. Yes, in the Zoom, we have got 550 registrations just by this moment. This is the list of countries from across the world, all continents are represented, you just can see this list, okay? I'm not going to read everything. So coming back, lastly, that's my other critical links are these chairs and co-chairs. Without them, this program was not really possible and could not be successful. So we have put their data and information on the web page. If you go into the program plan page, so you will be able to see the profiles of these chair, respected chairs and co-chairs and in which session they had done this job. So link is there, you can go into it, okay? Another thing is that the web, web development and web work has been very intensive from the beginning and even today, I mean, it is going on. So when my friend, Irsad Mohammed is running this company, Three Media Design, so he is very competent designer and also the web developer, okay? So he has been doing, and you will be surprised that he is, he never asks for the money, okay? I give, rather, I give him money sometimes. Okay, so he never asks, so he's such a wonderful person. Lastly, the admin of the Zoom, Zoom became very, you know, it's a difficult thing for us and finally, my, my son came forward and he did it successfully. Now you can see his picture and he's a boy. He has completed 12 standard and now he will be entering in the university for studying the design. Yes. So finally, I have to share with you, okay, two minutes is the, the finance, okay? We are, we want to be very, very, you know, transparent in terms of all these affairs. So many persons, many delegate participants who are, or even the learner participants who are paying a small amount for the certificate or the small amount as the fee, they really think that they are contributing a lot, yes, really, they are contributing a lot. But, but see our efforts and our, you know, expenditure. So I have just listed down the various things, but I have not giving, I'm not giving any figure. You, the task is yours, how much money will you spend if you are going to organize this program, this kind of the global program for 10 days? How much money will you spend on different things? The question is to you. I'm not seeking any answer just right now, later on you can do. Now coming to the incomes, what we have got, so mostly the income came in kind support from the different partners, different faculty members, and this is really acknowledged. Really, we are grateful, we are indebted to all these people who have supported and contributed in kind. Fees which we have received, until December 19, we received certain fees in the form of like $19 per participant, per applicant and that maximum all money, even I paid from my pocket, it, one American payment gateway has eaten away entire money, okay? And this was our first experience, so it happened, okay? Then we shifted this payment gateway in India and this is really good payment gateway, they're not asked if something is not coming in this month and they won't charge anything. So you can see these figures. So lastly, I'm just giving the figure, net receipt is... So you can see these figures. So lastly, I'm just giving the figure net receipt is one thousand one hundred fifty USD, US dollars. Eleven hundred fifty dollars is the net receipt so far in the terms of the cash. So this is just income and the program, entire program is in front of you. So we pay different, you know, deductions and taxes, et cetera, all this, okay? Yes, now I'm stretching on the time in five minutes. Just give me, please moderator, madam, please give me five minutes. Okay?
Of course, doctor.
Yes, so I will try to present because this will be the food for thought for the panelists and next panel discussion is the main main attraction over this special session and they will they they have really contributed a lot, lot of time and they have, you know, spared their time from all their tight engagements. That is most important, but my, I'm just giving some clues. So the philosophy of this grassroots institute is just depicted in this diagram quickly made by me. Ah, although I could make a better diagram later on, but really because of the, you know, I did scarcity of time, I did this. If you see the central box in the in the middle is ah, the universities and research institutes are there and then there is a field, field and the practice. There are different actors, NGOs, the the nonprofit sector, the entire nonprofit sector, non-state actors. So various people are, you know, working and acting on the ground. And there is a knowledge bank which is being created and generated in the universities and research institutes. But we found, we discovered over our experience of like long experience that this, there is a gap between these two ah, different points. The research is many, many researchers and many researchers, scholars and they they really work in in isolation from the team. So is there any, you know, the narrow narrowing the gap, this gap is possible? Okay, there are various ways, various methods of, you know, narrowing down this gap. And addressing this this gap, there may be many strategies, but the our strategy is capacity building. So if we build the capacities and then probably we can reduce this gap. Not entirely, but to some extent. And if we, if it is done, then probably the policy environment can be influenced in a better way by way of the research and, you know, knowledge inputs. Ah, which emanate or which inculcate or which implicate with the field inputs, okay? There is a huge knowledge and a huge experience, experiential learning at the field, in the field by the professionals, scholars, many researchers have their field orientation, but majority do not have. Yes. With the with this note of the background and, you know, philosophical base of our organization. So for, I mean, under this activities or under the mountain team. So we can, we have proposed three things now. Summer school is one which you have already seen. So in the in the year two thousand thirteen, so this summer school, we have proposed, I mean, this is not a final blueprint, please. Do not misunderstand. This is just a proposal and just a kind of, you know, idea from our side. Now it will depend on the panelists in what directions they will carry it forward. So it in twenty three, it could be done in your ancient Ukraine. It has to be instead of nine days, it could, it can, it should be ten days because there is one theme which is lacking and that is mountain. We have covered in the in one of the sessions on the group seven, in the group seven, mountain legislation policy. But I believe that this this particular theme should be a separate theme and independent theme. As there are other nine different themes. So what could be the eligibility of the participants? So based on the experience of this time, so I propose that the eligibility should be restricted to the early career researchers. Ah, there is a basis for saying this, so I will share later on, what is the basis for this? Ah, there could be, another proposal is that there could be ten equal partners in charge of each day theme. For example, if it is on the sustainability and sustainable development, there can be one partner independently holding that day and the theme on resource sharing basis. This is, this is, this should be, you know, Mark, okay, then can be the collaborating organizations up in addition to the partners. Key support international organization and I have proposed that it can be the hybrid model again. Physical as well as for, if it is a physical succeeding. So we will take twenty plus twenty delegates, physical twenty plus twenty means the twenty delegates will come from the ten equal partners to each. And rest twenty could be openly announced and can be selected by the selection committee. This is just a proposal anyway. Then will be the learner participants as we have got this time. So if there are the ten equal partners coming, so the arrangement will be like this. This time, the grassroots institute was on the first and then there will be ah, if you see on the bottom, there there are, there there are populated, you know, this, these are the partners and these are the collaborators on the bottom, so. But this arrangement, if there are the ten partners of coming on equal resource sharing basis. So these all tell partners will be equally, you know, placed and equally, you know, position, position. And and then bottom, bottom will be for 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 the collaborators. So we will, we will, you know, further classify and decide this kind of the partnerships and collaborations later on, we will devise. I mean, this is just a proposal again. So what could be the format? This is upon again, subject to the discussions. Or the next thing could, one major activity could be like sustainability summit. So this can be the twin event. As the the summer school is concluding, then just after like one or two days gap. This summit can start so that the participants from Ukraine can shift to, for example, the Romanian. Ah, Wallahi University has already agreed to, you know, host this event. And this could be for three ma- three days, four days, five days, whatever. The format I have proposed is physical plus online. I'm not sure whether what what will be the proposal further, okay, but this is from my side. And for eligibility, there should be any restriction, anyone having, whether it's an emeritus professor or ah, is a is a leader in the NGO or is just a student, master degree student can be present in the summit and can contribute. Ah, similarly, it should be open for partnerships and collaborations. Lastly, the proposal is that we grassroots institute is going to develop one leadership program. Which will be called grassroots global leadership and within this leadership program, there will be six or seven different themes. Ah, so of these different themes, two, two could be mountain ecosystem management and mountain rural development. So this is just a kind of proposal that these two things could be fit into all a larger program. So this leadership fellows or academic fellows, senior fellows, professional fellows, they could be ah, could join this platform for two, three years and then probably in two thousand twenty five, we will have a big gathering somewhere in the globe. I don't know. Ah, yes, this current website, grassrootsglobal.net ah, will be used for all this platform. And that's why we write GG and grassroots global network and grassrootsglobal.net is the website. So this was the proposal. I have consumed ten minutes more because of my um, technique, technical failure in the system and the connectivity. So I have completed this now. Go back to, sorry, please, please, Dr. Dr. Moderator.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hasrat. Ah, thank you for the elaborate analysis of the outcomes of the summer field school. And thank you for sharing your proposals of the future roadmap. Ah, many participants have posted the words of appreciation in Zoom chat and meeting and praising brilliant organization, your energy and dedication. So thank you very much for sharing. You have drawn like a perfect roadmap that would be proceeded by the following speakers for sure. And now it is an immense honor for me to introduce the special chair of today's special session, Professor Parvise Kuhav Khan. He is a president of the World Agricultural Heritage Forum in Italy. Professor at Nanjing Agricultural University in China. Professor of the Hasty University in Iran and professional senior research fellow of the Research Institute for Humanity and Nature Japan. Now I would like to invite Professor Parvise for the opening of today's panel discussion. Please.
Thank you very much, friends and colleagues. I'm honored to be participating and chairing this meeting. And obviously, first I want to thank Professor Arjeman for his excellent organization. And sometime very, very pushy sort of way of managing, which I guess we need that, otherwise it would not work. The other co-chairs and professors and colleagues and speakers, you have done a wonderful job. And I personally think ten days is a huge number of days to organize such a such a wonderful thematic discussion and with so many people. Particularly these days, there are so many people, so many organizations, they want to organize Zoom conferences, Zoom meetings, et cetera. I receive at least five to ten per day. Either as an inviting or speaker or participants. Also from many, many international organizations, including UN, where I have been serving for a long time. Now, I do not want particularly to address any specific issue, if you allow me. Mrs. Moderator, I would eventually do some conclusion or concluding remarks after the discussions of today. And then I will present a short PowerPoint, my suggestion to be a concrete sort of follow up in this because the theme of this session is sustainability and how to make mountain development, sustainable development. So I would rather to speak at the end of this session, maybe five minutes with a PowerPoint presentation for concrete work. I will stop here and I would invite colleagues and friends to raise their hand and follow sort of their comments and suggestions according to the instruction they received from Professor Arjeman. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Professor. No problem. We will manage to find the time um, at the end of every panelist chair in their vision. So you will be given five minutes time. And now then, as you have kindly suggested, I would like to give the word to special panelists of our today's session to share their views, opinions and ideas on the perspectives of developing the outcomes of the summer field school. I would like to remind all participants that the list of special panelists and their info is displayed on the program plan. Please scroll down. Thus, I will not duplicate this info with introducing the special panelists due to the time restrictions. I will simply call them out by name. And esteemed special panelists, you are welcome to share your opinions following five points that have been listed in the tentative schedule which you have already received. The allotted time, let me remind you that the allotted time for each speaker is three minutes. I will be following the time and you are free to share your inputs with the help of slides or without. But please, whatever format you choose, you are highly requested to manage your speech within the allotted time. As well, please test your video or audio slides in advance to avoid losing precious time for managing the technical difficulties. It is really important for us to hear the precious opinions of all of you, so please stick to the time limitations. Ah, I suggest to start then with the first special panelist. Ah, and I can see a couple of the raising hands already. Ah, I suggest that we start with Michaela Antofi. Please.
Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for having this honor to to speak in this forum. I need to tell you that I really treasure this scientific saga, even I wasn't able to attend all sessions. It was for the first time during pandemic when I felt that we shared our knowledge on a platform of specialists, researchers and students, different points of view from pure science up to interface between science and policy and from so many countries, similar with the capacity building development strategy. That creates the opportunity to be known and to know other specialists for so many different fields of knowledge. I would change nothing in terms of gains of this particular seminar, the summer school. However, for the future and based on this wonderful experience, I believe that we need a special forum of discussion. Even Google group to define and redefine the scene of study areas to evaluate gaps and needs as well as to further develop our communication tool. We need all of this for paving our goals for a sustainable future. Science needs today more compared to the past to get access for also throughout this type of actions. Here, Dr. Hasrat Ajuman created a real berserker's melting pot for the conservation and sustainable use of biodiversity into the mountains at a global level as for the securing food for our future generation. Each speaker is an important gem into one big puzzle of knowledge for supporting in harmony the biodiversity conservation. As I have seen passion and positive emotions in all the topics tabled by all faculty members, delegates and special guests. Our major problem is the physics concept of time to understand and to cope for the fast acting into the conservation and sustainable use of mountain ecosystem. Life is such a fragile gift on Mother Earth. We are sharing so many similarities at the cellular metabolic level down to bacteria and up to bacteria. Biodiversity is unbutu and we are biodiversity. Therefore, we need to foster our inputs into an innovative time matrix dedicated for biodiversity conservation and engage policy to understand the gravity of losing our history and to acknowledge the real threats for human civilization. Thank you so much and I do hope the special forum of discussions may further support us in this direction. I will end this with the news. Pointed in April that microplastic is falling from the sky over the mountains in Montana, United States. This is real and we really need to be engaged in this forum. Thank you very much for this. And it was really wonderful to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor, for sharing your inputs. It was like it was amazing. Ah, now I suggest that we proceed with the the next special panelist. Please, Madhu Verma, Dr. Madhu Verma, can you please proceed? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this opportunity. First of all, congratulations to us for organizing a very wonderful event. A very noble for a very noble cause to invite different category of people to learn about mountain ecosystems in great details. They're very fragile, very biodiversity rich. Ah, I mean, ecosystem need to be understood well with the integrity. I have a very quick suggestions regarding the program, it is a very good, definitely format. But of course, we can further enrich by adding some kind of tools which people might, I must understand, first of all, to understand the get an idea about the spread of, because I I dealt with ecosystem services in these areas. We have some very interesting useful tools available to map these ecosystem services across, you know, these mountain ecosystems. And also we can, we can give them a kind of a training module, because it's a training program, how to actually arrive at these values. The whole evaluation, you know, or to look at can be also taught. We can think about also taking it forward, what is happening currently. We can think about also taking it forward, what is happening currently in the international domain by the National Statistical Division, the National Environment Program, by greening the accounting system of mountains, area, mountain ecosystems. Very important to understand what is ecological cost of development in these domains. You pay huge amount of biodiversity degradation cost for achieving development in these areas. So, we can teach these kinds of tools. I'll be very happy to continue towards that. And finally, these mountains, like in, I can take an example of India, the entire Himalayan range of the region. These landscapes are the water towers for many countries. But there's, and people actually contribute, conserve these habitats, conserve these mountains to provide these services. But not much is given in exchange in terms of compensation, rewards, or benefits, or in a sort of payment to these, you know, conservation people who are engaged in conservation process. I think it's high time to talk about payment for ecosystem services, incentive-based mechanism, composition, rewards. I think that could also be part of your module, if you consider that. And having worked a lot with the policymakers all my life, I was with the Ministry of Environment, Forest, and Climate Change Organization before joining this Institute of World Resources Institute. I did entire work for policymakers. I think it's a very good idea to involve, invite some of them to take sessions where you can have some panel discussion, where policymakers can come with their problems, kind of body of knowledge required from such programs, which, you know, youngsters would take forward and engage in such research, which will increase, you know, information for policymakers to have business knowledge, to have a nutritious kind of decision-making process at the end of it. So, that's what I have from my side to contribute. Thank you very much once again, and congratulations, and all the very best for the future endeavors. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for sharing your valuable input. Thank you. That's perfect. Let's proceed. Dr. Mahinder Swaria, could you please proceed? You are muted. Sorry, 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 Doctor. You are muted.
Sorry, yeah. Am I audible now? Yeah, thank you. First of all, I would like to congratulate the organizer for such mega event. By just representing my institution's government college, Chumba, Himachal Pradesh, as well as the Socialial Society, Himachal Pradesh, I extend our institutional support for the forthcoming proposed Summerfield School in 2023. I am of the view that pre-summer school type of academic activity should be planned at number of places and institutions as well. So, for this, I offer myself and my institution for such activities in 2022 even. I, on the behalf of my institution, consented to share the resources which we are having, undoubtedly, the scope of such collaborations must be expanded so that the maximum participants, students, as well as the faculty can be benefited. Issues prevalent in mountain regions like food insecurity, developmental project culture, diversity, biodiversity impact of globalization on mountains, post-COVID society in mountains, climate change, sustainable development goal, mountains, and tribal and rural communities, urban and rural quantum, and rural migrations are of paramount significance and must be considered for the forthcoming academic events being organized by Grassroot Institute along with their collaborators. I invite all the partner institutions to come and work for the better futures in solidarity with you all. I just thank you all to just be part of this one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. It was like a great pleasure to hear your opinion. And now, I would like to welcome the next speaker, Dr. Alessandra Pellegrini. Can you please?
Okay, grazie. Cito la parola perché alle quattro abbiamo consiglio comunale e decido la parola per una traduzione in inglese del nostro pensiero alla nostra signora Gail.
Hi, everyone. So, to be faster, I will speak for Alessandra because at four, we have another appointment. So, "Village in Motion and New Horizons," this is our slogan. Thanks for the opportunity that Summerfield School has offered us to make our municipality known to other countries. This is extremely important for us, and the ideas confrontations makes communities grow, no matter what they are. We brightly illustrate some ideas that with the close collaboration of Summerfield School could be launched in the near future. Is it possible to organize an event together with the Summerfield School? What can it be and what formal? And the answer is yes. It is certainly possible to organize other events and other collaborations. I'm thinking of our network, Alliance in the Alps, a true incubator of ideas and exchange of experiences that contribute in various form to the growth of Alpin communities. An international agreement would give the opportunity to participate at different levels with the aim of discussing specific issues that could lead to the construction of concrete projects and the exchange of ideas. How can committed and dedicated partner be involved in sharing bases risk theories? Should the field of the collaboration be rewired within and expanded? I believe that the expansion of collaboration is essential to grow not only locally, but in more general terms at the global level. I suggest that the expansion of collaboration is essential for the further growth of what has been done. Addressing mountain sub-disciplines and contemporary issues, how can recent knowledge and practical solution be integrated? Today, the exchange of ideas and knowledge is faster and faster. Our planet has become one and only global village as far as ideas are concerned. While the exchange of thought is extremely fast, the concrete implementation of ideas sometimes becomes very difficult because they are subject to various factor, one for all the policies that doesn't always meet with the real needs of the population. As already mentioned, we support the importance of exchanging good practice that can represent the platform where we can develop other ideas and experiences. A good idea is the starting chain for other good ideas. I ended up by announcing that we are currently working on two new projects. First, the Enigma of the Water. Its perennial flow and change nourishes the world in a life circle from the sea to the atmospheres to the subsoil. What future?
Excuse me for interruption. Could you please finalize in thirty seconds?
Okay, we ended up. So, the second project is a music far and with beats in 2324, which will be accompanied by an institutional representative of public administration haunting products and all of those who deal with pollinating insect and scientific leather. So, thanks to everyone, hoping of meeting you soon.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, I suggest to invite the next speaker, special panelist, Professor Gabriela Teodorescu. Can you please?
Yes, thank you again. I was honored to be partner in this event and participant in this prestigious, scientific event. First of all, I would like to congratulate Grassroots Institute because they had a wonderful job. I think it was a challenge to bring together so much specialist from all of the world, and it was possible to interact each other. I think this subject regarding the resource management, human development, sustainability manage, it is a globally problem. So, we bring together these natural resources at the global level. I think we need to thanks for the contributions for all the faculty members, the delegates, who share their experience and their knowledge. I think all these nine days, it was a good opportunity to build some bricks between us and to be considered as a beginning of new cooperation between our institutions or our researchers or us in individual research field. I think this summer school could be a good lesson for our policymakers or people involved in strategies or in policy to see that we can treat this subject related to natural resources at a globally field, in a globally dimension. Not at the end, I would like to thanks for Dr. Hasrat for the huge effort to organize this event and bring us together. I think it's not easy to organize an event like that. And I see that he have a very good power for next future, for next events. And for that, I would like to thank again because he proposed us to be organizer for Sustainability Summit in 2023. And this is an opportunity for me to invite you all to help us to organize this event, to be beside of us in organizing of this event. And I hope to be possible to see you all in 2023 in Romania, to have the opportunity to see each other and meet each other in face to face. At the end, I would like to thanks to all, all the participants, all the speakers, all the faculty members and delegates because their contribution was really important. Thank you, Ukraine, for your great contribution. And see you next year and in 2023 in Romania. Thank you again, and see you in Valachia University of Tergovista. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Professor. We will be looking forward to meeting you in person. Now, I suggest that we proceed with the next special panelist, Dr. Pradeep Merta. Can you please? You've got, yeah.
Yeah, thank you so much. And, you know, first of all, congratulations to entire team, people who are here, you know, who are visible, but also people who are backstage. Despite all the, you know, odd, the situation of the pandemic, we have witnessed the power of virtual platform. Otherwise, it's very difficult to bring almost 66 organizations, universities from 22 countries, 98 faculty members, more than 500 participants from 70 countries together for an event like this. And I think, you know, while we are talking about 2023, as Dr. Hasrat mentioned, that it can be a hybrid mode, but definitely an offline mode to give hands-on experience to the participants, which is best, you know, learning experience for everyone, that should be done. And we need, you know, funding for these kind of events. There were collaborators here, but I think we can collaborate with these international organizations for, you know, for supporting the summer school. At the same time, the universities can announce a scholarship and send their student for, you know, for events like these. And at the same time, you know, these summer schools can be organized in different countries. As already mentioned, that, you know, now we are proposing in 2023, you know, people will be, the participant will be going from one country to another. But similarly, sometime it can be Nepal, sometime it can be India, sometime it can be Alps. So, that kind of a model should be adopted. And also, it should not end here when we are talking about the summer school, you know, 2023. But what about the participants who have attended here? So, I think that, you know, they also need hand-holding for coming time. And this can be a platform, a forum, where they can, you know, learn and share and, you know, about different things. And at the same time, it should lead to networking, sharing, and collaborations for research, study, and development. I think that is the power of, you know, all these institutions coming together, all these participants from different countries coming together in future. If we can capitalize on that, I think that will be a wonderful outcome of the summer school. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for the brief sharing of the outcome. So, let me invite the next speaker, Dr. Aleksandr Kysiluk. Aleksandr Kysiluk, you have your hand raised.
Surovny povazne tovarisvo, meni sегодne dopomaga je porikladat Maria Astovan. I meni duche prijemno, shosho sегодne persha skola planovalo se v Ukraini i druga skola planuje se v Ukraini.
Dear colleagues and partners, thank you for invitation. It's a great honor to express my opinion. I am expressing my opinion with help of my translator. And it's great honor to me that first, Summerfield School occurred in Ukraine and next, Summerfield School is going to be held in Ukraine too.
Ale vrachovayut che tu situacii, kasha sегодne nie v svete i vrachovayut che ti mozhlivosti, nuanzi, kye yev svete mi pobachi le shosho skola provedeno v režimie online de bulo zalucheno duche bagato lektoriv z riznih krajin, ali z girskech regionov, kye mohy govorite pro ti problemy, kye ma y girske regioni.
But taken into consideration, different obstacles caused by restrictions which occur in the world now showed out that such schools like field summer schools can be held online too. And it's huge, great possibility for us to be invited, to participate, and to see huge number of lectures, of delegates.
I ti petania, kye pidiimali se v riznih sekciach, vystupali rizni lektori, jak sегодne bulo vzez kazaeno na volonterskih osnovaх. Ce je duche hroshha ritsch, shoshi krajine svetu, girskech regionov chodit ubednatysya i bereshvatiti ti problemy, jak rozvidku, tak stalogorozvidku tih regionov, de prživa je velika kilkja sesevnya.
And it's huge event. It's a huge opportunity for mountain regions of different countries of the world to be represented and to express their visions of sustainable development, to express their opinions. And it's very great that so many countries from different regions and their participants were involved and they worked on as volunteers, prepared their lectures.
I meni chocice podjakovate institutu Grassroot, a osobistou panu Hasratu, zakem ja znayomij, shosho vin proviv taku veliku robotu, organizoval stiki ludej i dav mozhlivijst piznaty bagatjom ludnjam pro problemy girskech regionov.
And I would like to express my gratitude to Grassroots Institute in general and to Dr. Hasrat in particular, that he did a great job, that he was able to organize such event and provided participants with an opportunity to be educated with the challenges and problems of mountain areas.
I meni chocice svedati.
Dovoljno, vobojčte, u vas je bukovalno 20 sekund, čem zakinšite.
20 sekund. Karpaski Načionalny Prirodny Park zaprosuje ridnju školu 2023 roku v mesto Jarenčje. Mi gotovji robiti vše, šo potrebno. Děkuju.
We are ready to do all we can, to take all our efforts. And we invite Field Summer School 2023 to Jarenčje. We will be honored to see all of us.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I suggest that we proceed with our next speaker, Mr. Gentimiraj. You have raised your hand, and it like was, yeah, yeah, now we can see you. Please proceed.
Thank you very much, honored professors, honored delegates, and honored participants. We have a smart quote, it would be that each time we learn a new word, we reach our hands towards the traces they leave. But there may be some words that cannot be comprehended alone. In our case, being a small community, a small country like Albania, it is, it was, how to say, it's a big honor that it is given to us, us to participate in these global events, where the size of the country is not measured by its perimeter, by its surface or by the number of the people, but it is measured by what is found within. So that's a huge moral, that it is, it was given as a message for this conference. Having so many people from all the world being joined together and having, being at the same table. That was an honor for us. I am here with my father, Petri Tymira, who also was the chair of one of the sessions and the lecturer, which would like to say a few words in the thank you, the Grassroot Institute.
Yes, thank you very much for all. Thank you very much for Grassroot. Uh is, uh for me, is interesting experience to participate in this big event and global event. I thank, thank you very much for you all, for your work, for professional uh event, for everything. Thank you very much.
What maybe one suggestion that we would like to comment or to add is that as we talk about interactivity or comprehending words together with one another, it would be very nice, for example, to integrate maybe some workshops or some some parts of the event would be so as participants can give their opinion, but also feel maybe to feel as leaders in in some specific part. That is important also from from our teacher perspective. And maybe in the future, if it is going to become physically, so it will be organized in a physical place, it would be magnificent and brilliant if each of the organizations, which is going to propose students, they can organize at least one orienting day in their home country. So as to orient all the participants in a small group, in a hub, to break the ice. And after then, we we do the big summer school. Thank you very much, Dr. Hasrat, Grassroot Institute and all the, all the other people.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And now I would like to invite the next special panelist, Mr. Sandra Kulis. Please. You're muted. You're muted.
Okay, okay. Thank, thank you very much. And I don't want to repeat what was said before, that uh I appreciate your effort, Dr. Hasrat and the colleagues, to create this very unique opportunity to come together and to discuss the global level, the main issues regarding the ecosystem of the, of the mountain regions. So I think was a very good initiative, important initiative, and I don't know any, any similar initiatives around the world, which bring together such a big regions and people and experts. Uh but I would like to focus on some of my suggestions regarding the, the future of the activity of the, of this, of this uh efforts. The first, I think it's very important, it was very important to bring together researchers and practitioners. But in the future, I suggest you to put more attention on the practical practitioners. So maybe the next time, it would be good to hear much more uh practical experiences from those NGOs, local organizations who are working in the mountain regions and are doing similar things. And also find a very important, uh third component of this dialogue, which could be a kind of trialogue, to extend it to the policymakers, because many, many things depends on the, on the policy and the politician, nation-state and state level, and it would be good if the future would be involved more, more policymaker, uh policy, decision makers into the workshop and to discuss how this different uh observation, suggestion can be, can be implemented in the, in the practice. And also very important would be to use this, this knowledge base, which we represent here together. It could be a like of knowledge hub for, for others and can use the, the knowledge that we, we developed and we have in this, in this network, this knowledge network and disseminate this knowledge with the one of the key issue, I think, in the future. Uh my third suggestion would be a tiny suggestion, but I think back to the practice, practice of the, the practice. Uh it would be interesting if you could launch a kind of best practice of local sustainable development. And this best practice, uh address the local NGOs, local, local organization, local governments. We introduce some, some, some initiative at the local level and it would be interesting to uh to launch a kind of best practice of, of uh mountain, sustainable mountain development and to invite people, NGOs and other organizations who, who take part of all these, all these things. Regarding uh the plans, the Capetian Foundation, we are working with which cover the bordering areas of five countries, Hungary, Poland, Slovakia, Romania and Ukrainia. Uh we are organizing the civil society hub meeting in the next year in Poland. And we like to focus on a very important dimension of the sustainable development, which is a community aspect of sustainable development. And it will be a network event, hopefully we can organize it in a, in a, in a face-to-face meeting. And I would like to invite those who are interested, what is the situation, how the things looks like uh from, from the grassroots level and to invite you to attend this, this Capetian civil society platform meeting next year, hopefully we'll be organizing in March.
Thank you. Regarding the finance. Your time is up.
I would like to suggest to make some fundraising effort to approach national governments. And because the national government play an important role, as I mentioned. And also think it will be important to, to approach some of the big international organizations like UN or the European Union and other international institution to, to finance, to get support for the future activity of the, of, of, of the, of the summer school. And to find a way that what will happen between two summer schools. I think it's also important to plan something, uh let's say, sub-meetings or, or to create a kind of uh kind of list of participants or profile of participants or something that is.
Yeah, excuse me to interrupt you, really appreciate.
Uh between, between us. But once more, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh yeah, we, we really appreciate your valuable uh like input. So thank you very much. And let me invite the next speaker, uh Dr. Chee Truan. Could you please proceed? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Asian. Yeah. I have four points to make and let me just list those four points out, just in case I've run out of time. So just one by one. First, my suggestion is that it's time for us to move from multi-disciplinary or plural disciplinary to inter and trans-disciplinary. Not only the varieties of topics, but also we need to really make a uh transformative move into the integration and problem-based, as well as solution-driven types of pedagogy and approach. The second suggestion of mine is the field path of the field school. Now, we know that Dr. Hasrat has already put the proposal for the virtual and physical, meaning hybrid modality. However, there are many different ways now to return to the new normancy. And by that, I mean, that leads me to the third point. That is a combination between virtual platform, technology and a new way of doing things. Uh perhaps I put a question back to Dr. Hasrat. Just to flip the coin in terms of the resources, the cost that organizers would be willing to put in, to organize such a massive program. The question I'd like to put back to you is how much CO2 or carbon emission or carbon footprint the program have saved from emitting to the environment. So these questions, in fact, uh H C is module, by the way. I am a secretary at the Himalayan University Consortium. We've been organizing very similar type of program at a much less scale, a smaller scale. But the question is, like, I've been pondering about it, you know, over the past two years. We save so much or let's say we stopped so much carbon footprint from emitting to the environment by our creative modality, innovative modality. And my last point to Madame Chair, I'm ending right now, in terms of partnership building. And I'd like to actually very much share with you that perhaps the only organic way uh to move ahead with the new normancy is resource sharing. And Dr. Hazrat, I am with you. Uh in terms of, you know, this is the only way to go forward. Uh perhaps the old way of knocking at doors, raising funding, asking for donors is not anymore sustainable. And for us, as organizers, as program initiator, we really need to come together on a resource sharing basis, and I believe in it. I believe that resource sharing, an organic way to build partnership is a new way and a new green way to return to transformative and build back better. So again, just to summarize, I feel there are networks, consortia out there. At least I can list about five different consortia and networks who actually are doing very similar sort of programs, trans and interdisciplinary. And there are ways to go brand, to promote together across continents and take turn, can rotate and to make sure that field components will not be missed. And by being in the field, I means actual being in the field out there. So let me end my intervention here and thank you again, Madame Chair. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for following the time limit. Thank you and your precious thoughts. Now I would like to invite Professor Dr. Hatismov Minjanov, uh like for sharing his vision and his outcomes uh on the summer field school. Okay, looks like, uh like he's not here. So, uh like, uh dear Dr. Devendra Gausan, can you please, uh you have your hand raised. So can you please proceed with sharing with us your vision and opinion?
Okay, okay. Thank you, Madame Monitor. It's my great pleasure to say something from my heart about this field schools. Okay. I had an opportunity to participate as a presenter and also chairing one of the sessions and also attending some of the lectures in the, in the print, I know, over the time in the last nine days. And I found that this is very excellent in organizations of the event and with not so much experts and a lot of, you know, uh expertise from around the world with lot of different disciplines, covering different aspects. And it was very much informative and useful, I think, for the participant and also the experts panelists also. So however, you know, nothing is perfect. There's always room to improve. So for my, in my views, I think we can improve still this arrangement of this, design of this summer field school in the next time. Uh with some refinement in this, in the process and the content. So in terms of process, I suggest that, you know, uh if you have a I mean, timing, you know, timing given for the, the expert presenter was very good anyway, it was half an hour. But there was no time for interactive participatory discussions between participant and presenters. I think if we could allot at least five minutes, if possible, more than that, around ten minutes and only presenter present around in twenty minutes. The expert panel or faculty members present within twenty minutes or twenty-five minutes. And we have at least five minutes to for interactive discussions. And that will help, you know, to, you know, have a live discussions and very active participation, proactive participation of the members. And that is one. In terms of content, I think I suggest that I, I feel that, you know, there was very good, you know, in a information, existing situation of mountain ecosystems, uh resources, livelihood, coabord, well done. But I think some of these innovative solutions and interventions that, and also success stories that is, you know, going on in different parts around the world in the mountain common, mountain areas could be, you know, packaged into separate sessions. If you have a separate sessions for innovative solutions and outcomes to be presented as a success stories from the expert panels, uh that would be great learning for the participant and also the other team members. And in terms of a model, a hybrid model would be better, what I also feel that. So that in, for me, I think that this is the very useful sessions. I'm very much thankful to organizer, especially Grassroot Institute and Dr. Hassan and also all team members for giving me this opportunity in this session. Thank you very much.
Thank you, doctor. It was a great pleasure to hear your comments. And now I would like to invite Professor David Bunikovsky.
Uh thank you. Uh congratulations to the organizer for such a great event. It's a huge job you did here. So from my perspective, much has been spoken, for example, about, especially about indigenous and nomadic ways of life. That was very interesting for me, indigenous wisdom, indigenous knowledge, and I was chairing one of the sessions. But in the future, what I would like to propose is to talk also about indigenous peoples in the Arctic or indigenous peoples in the Nordic countries. I live in eastern Finland and I think that indigenous rights are also a problem here in the Nordic countries. There are the Sami people, the only one Aboriginal nation living in Norway, Sweden, Finland and, and Russia. And there are many problems concerning natural resources management, self-determination, cultural autonomy and so on. So I would suggest and propose to go also to indigenous peoples, to indigenous knowledge, traditions, rights. Um also in the Nordic countries, uh within the Arctic, of course, it's a wider problem. There are some problems concerning, for example, land management also in Canada, also in Russia, so it's wider problem. But I would focus especially on the, on the, on the indigenous peoples in the Nordic countries. So it is about the Sami people, it's about forty up to eighty thousand Sami people living in these Nordic countries. They were colonized, they lost their heritage, some of them speak about cultural genocide. So it's a very important problem, also in these human rights-oriented countries, welfare state countries. So, you know, all these traditional livelihoods like fishing, hunting, shamanism, art, reindeer husbandry are just over for them. So it's a huge problem also. Uh and there are many processes behind of that. If you go back in time to the nineteenth century, to twentieth century, you know, there was a problem of confiscation of property, who is the, the owner of the public land. There was the revival of the Lutheran ethics, there were new educational systems implemented and so on. So all this, and also new rules concerning reindeer husbandry and grazing and fences at the borders and closing of the borders. So all these processes pushed the Sami people, the indigenous peoples in the Nordic countries and eradicated their cultural heritage. And now there is a revival of that. It's very interesting also in terms of ecosystems, in terms of justice or historical justice and in terms of, of uh of resource management or natural resources management. As you know, maybe there are also mountain Sami, there are also fishing Sami, there are mainland Sami, so there are different groups as well. So there are huge problems right here also, like in Norway, like in Sweden, like in Finland. There is a problem of indigenous self-determination, there's a problem of self-government, land claims, cultural autonomy and so on. But what is the most important for me, that we push this idea that indigenous or nomadic way of life matters, that it is close to nature and there is some kind of wisdom, it's important for us. And, and I think personally, if I may speak here, I think that we should also go back to the idea of historical justice, that we, uh we have to do something for those who have been depreciated for, for years or for, for tens of years. Their cultures, indigenous cultures, nomadic cultures were depreciated. We should do something more, also in these, you know, richer countries uh in, in the Arctic. Thank you very much and congratulations again. It was wonderful event and I, I am surprised how many people participated and all these sessions and so on. Fascinating. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your valuable comments. Uh I would like to invite Professor Ahmad Mahdavi for sharing his valuable inputs and finding the time to be here, please.
Thank you very much. Uh with apology that today, after some years of using my camera, it was changed and I had to remove it and then back again. I should thank you, a big thanks really to Dr. Hazrat and other organizers for a very, very comprehensive online conference about mountains that are very important and very wider about agri, agri-food issues, about ecosystems, very good. And thank you for that. My background basically, and during the past two decades, we have been discussing and concentrating on biodiversity globally. It is really in danger. And how should we expect as humans to be alive and continue when we do not care about the life of other species and they are going extinct and extinct? So biodiversity is in danger and particularly in mountains. Mountains are a big part, important part of this planet. And I, I, as a mountain climber, during the past fifty years, I am observing getting emptied. Really lots of mountains are getting emptied of plants and insects that are, at first plants of insects are the basis of life on this planet. The body mass of all insects on the planet are five times at least are human, human beings. And they are going, they are vanishing from the planet. So for the next grassroots conference, I recommend, I am ready to organize a workshop about the biodiversity generally and mountains, mountain farming and products. I'm living in a very beautiful area near Tehran, you know, and going to the mountains and lots of mountain products. Mountain products are different and, you know, very good products. I'm, I'm interested to organize a workshop for the next conference. And the, about, about other things, you know, about the place of the conference, to be physical or not physical or online, this is very important issues that should be discussed further. And I thank you. And one last sentence that about what we are doing now specialized on the planet, about toxic pollution reduction, everywhere, everywhere now, with some pieces of toxic pesticide and chemicals are, are just, you can see them. And please be careful of them. And one of the issues that is decreasing the biodiversity are pesticide and chemicals. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Professor, for the warning and for your valuable time that you managed to find. Now I would like to proceed with inviting our next respected panelist speaker, Professor Seval Sangupta. Can you please? Thank you. Sorry, Professor, you're muted. Thank you.
Yeah, it's honor for me to be here. In fact, what, I will just summarize my suggestion before that. I would like to offer my sincere thanks to Grassroots as well as organization, as well as Dr. Hazrat for organizing such an event. And in this, all the nine days of work, we have covered many things, biodiversity, climate change, legal aspect, sustainability, livelihood, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. However, for sustainability, one should have an holistic approach. And I suggest some of the issues like endivism and conservation along with mountain geography, abundant biography, ethnic diversity, as only David has talked about, knowledge and culture, as because culture is fast eroding in most of the mountain areas. Conflict and peace in mountain societies, and all these mountains are very prone to different types of disasters. And disaster's management should be included. And what we are talking about, how to translate it into action, we have to develop some tools. And that may be walked out in two or three days workshop, how to develop the tools for converting our themes, our dream into action. And lastly, what has been proposed by, for the future by Dr. Hazrat? Two things has actually enlightened me regarding his emphasis on young minds. And that will be a long-lasting thing. Another one is equal partners in charge of their teams. Thank you. Thank you very much for giving me the time.
Thank you. Thank you. It was really perfect. And now I would like to proceed with the next special panelist, Dr. Matej Ogryn. Can you please?
Hello. I think we can see and hear each other. Of course, a big thanks to Hazrat Ajuman and Grassroots International Institute for the organizing such a big event. I don't think that any one of us imagined how big event this really will come out at the end. And for this final session, after already hearing some, some suggestions, I also would like to put some, some suggestion for, for further work. First of all, of course, when we are doing via internet, it's very hard to do a real summer school. Because summer school is something where also participants should work, should give their feedbacks and so on. But if we are going and I'm sure that the next event will be also live, then probably we should also think what will be the feedbacks. Because one thing is having a conference, which to be honest, doing on internet, it's more a conference format of working than, than a real school. So we should really think about what kind of school this will be and what will be the feedback of students or participants, what they will have to put as an input to this, to this event, so that they could really show at the end what they have learned. The second idea or way of thinking that I have is what are the target groups? Because even, even through this discussion so far, we have heard that, okay, we have like different stakeholders or of local development on one side, or maybe NGOs, we also have politicians and we could have just students. I mean, just as ordinary students. And these are not very same target groups. And it's very hard to prepare exact program if you don't really know what are the target groups. And one more thing, I think that Hazrat Ajuman already mentioned that he had some problems at the very beginning of organizing with involving different mountain networks and, and associations. I'm sure that many of us who are today and who were in last ten days in this hour group altogether, that we have quite a lot of connections with different mountain associations. As for myself, I, I know quite well the, the leadership of Alpine Convention because as a president of TIPRA Slovenia, we also are a participant in this Alpine Convention process. And I can really promise that I will bring a very good image of this school and the whole energy about mountain related topics towards the Alpine Convention leadership. And since Slovenia is taking the presidency in the next two years, maybe there would be some synergies that also the Alpine Convention could bring some, some, some topic or maybe some ideas into this event, if there will be, of course, a will and a potential or a need. So just, just few things to think about from my side and again, thank you very much.
I'm really sorry to interrupt. Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for finalizing. Thank you. It was a great pleasure to hear your thoughts and we will be looking forward to, like to cooperating. I would like to invite the next special panelist, Doctor Zimong Mong Fai. You have got, yeah, please, please.
Yes, okay. Thank you. I'm, hi everybody. I am Simao from University of Manali, Myanmar, formerly known as Bama. First of all, I would like to say my sincere thanks to the Professor Hassan Ajuman for inviting our university, but he's speaking this summer peace school and also inviting me to join this session as a special analyst. This time, my university, Manali University, provide only two delegate participants and we intend to provide more delegates and more delegate participant and facilitator next time. Actually, this is the my first experience to join this kind of summer school and I'm greatly impressed by the contribution of expert facilitators and, and the participants. Throughout the program, we can share a lot of knowledge on the broad field of study. We, we believe that second sky or knowledge sharing greatly support the Sustainable Development School of the U.N. As a university, my university, as a university from the developing countries, we also have a chance to share our expertise and knowledge with counterparts around the world. And we hope for the future further collaboration with my Manali University and foreign institution around the world. And actually, my background is geoscience, earth science, and I am happy to listen the lecture concerning the business geologic understanding of mountains. So I think it's better to provide a session on mountain building process in the next summer peace school. And we can share the knowledge on the geological history of mountains throughout the world. Generally, the mineralization process, which support the important natural resources for us is currently or indirectly related to mountain building process throughout the geological time. This process is also important on us to understand such as how they counted these mineral on and how to use this, this nature resources effectively for the sustainable deployments. So that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, doctor. It was like a great sharing of your input. Thank you. Now I suggest to invite Professor Dr. Prisanti Ganavardhana, please.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, my intervention is actually on the additional sub-disciplines that I would like to introduce for the next sessions. Because actually, the recent knowledge on the subject of environmental economics has been immense so that the, the importance of this subject can be incorporated especially into the mountain context. For example, we can think about other policy tools as, such as regional planning tools like the strategic environmental assessments and also a lot of regulations to ensure ecosystem sustainability such as how to adhere to the carrying capacities of ecosystems and also to how to maintain the sustainable rules, how, how we can maintain the extraction rates of these mountain ecosystems within the regenerative capacities and what other types of regulations that are available around the world. And also, especially there were previous speakers also talking about the economic values, especially the illustration of the damages that are done to the mountain degradation can be estimated and highlighted. So therefore, we can, you know, develop a lot of policy tools around that. And also we can establish the conservation values of the mountain ecosystems for the entire world because this is a global, global resource. And also in addition, there are values for the local resources, so a local community we cannot forget. So all these values have to be established early and then we can look at the trade-offs among the, the different types of users. And in this regard, we can think about economic instruments like the payment ecosystem services and establishing green accounts for the mountain ecosystem so that these will highlight the real importance of this ecosystem to the entire economy and to the entire globe. So thank you very much. And I would like to thank Grassroots Institute and Dr. Hazrat for their work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We really appreciate your inputs to be shared. Thank you. Now I would like to invite Dr. Samir Patel for sharing his vision. Okay, Dr. Samir. Yeah, please. Now we can see you.
I hope I'm audible.
Yeah, yeah, we can see and can hear you. Yeah, please.
A couple of quick points. Thanks again to Dr. Hazrat and the organizers for putting on a meaningful workshop. I know it must have been a very challenging exercise logistically and just overall trying to gather such a group of people. I had a couple of very brief points. My background is not directly in this field. It's more in the line of education surrounding the environment. So actual curricula and programs and tracing outputs and things like that. And I, I wonder if in the future, there's going to be the use of this as a course or as it's called now, a school, then some general principles could be brought in, like assigning credits and maybe thinking about specific learning outcomes and assessments, even if desired. Other thing I had, I think, following from some of the previous speakers is that in some ways, less is more. So what are the challenges with this is that it was just very, very broad. It's great as a starting point, but it might even be interesting to have a more specific focus in the, in the future. The other way that less is more is that we were able to do this with less travel as a previous speaker had already mentioned. And if we're going to keep doing that, then it's time to start thinking of ways to optimize the experience for people when they go through this sort of online course for intensive for many, many days in a row, which can get, can have its own issues. And finally, what some of the approaches suggested are transdisciplinary and interdisciplinary. And I think it will help to have an introduction to very specific examples of what that means to people. Maybe one of the future goals could be arriving at common understandings of even some of the terminology and framework for thinking about what we mean by transdisciplinary and interdisciplinary. Yeah, so I think that's it. Thank you once more for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you very much, doctor. Now I would like to proceed by inviting the next speaker, Dr. Shahidul Islam. Can you please? Yeah.
Thank you very much to Grassroots. And especially thanks to Dr. Hazrat Ajuman for his enormous hard work and really highly appreciated hard work he has done. And it's such a big program he has arranged in online platform. It was really a very nice program and we have enjoyed the whole program. And I would say too sorry to Dr. Hazrat because my, out of my ten delegates, there have four have missed their presentation. Now while in my country, that time was a pandemic situation. However, overall, the program was very nice and I have enjoyed. I want to share, although the program is very good, very nice. And we know that if they have a window, then we can go many ways. So I don't want to criticize the program. I just suggest that if the next program have some key points I want to share, that will be more developed. I want to suggest the first one is the program team. Here have the big team and many session. So it would be the four to five program team was the most probably it would be more fruitful. And especially the lecture session, the session is mostly, I saw that it's a big area. I want some. big area. I want something concrete. If there have some concrete session, then we could learn more things and also the program mostly there have I saw here that most of them are theoretical knowledge and it would be better to include some technical. I would suggest theoretical and technical, both the session will be more developed because in mountain area, we know that it's a very difficult to collect the data and mostly we collect the data from like various types of satellites and others remote sensing sources, we collect data. So it would be better if there have one or two technical session to how to analyze those data, how we can get the good data sets and more static data sets, then it would be more fruitful. One more thing I want to add that to the session lecture time, it was just only thirty minutes and I think it's very short time. If the session lecture duration is something larger than we could the lecturer can express his theme more precisely and also have it close just a five minutes cushion session, that would be more fruitful. And the I would suggest the participants that if there have the participants, both the researcher planner and also the people from implementation. So there would be the participants in nine is to three is to one like this. If the researcher is nine, then the planner will be three and
Doctor Islam, I'm really sorry to interrupt you, but could you please finalize in just fifteen seconds?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I have already mentioned it, all of my queries. So after all, thank you all and especially thanks to Grassroots. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Now I would like to invite the next panelist speaker, Dr. Alat Pechenjuk. Could you please proceed?
Dear colleagues, dear partners, dear Dr. Hazrat. I enjoyed our interaction and active communication during the Summerfield School. It is a large scale global educational and scientific project that today brings together participants from seventy-three countries. It's impressive. The Summerfield School combined different continents, different cultures, natural geographical and social conditions. But the biggest unifying factors, in my opinion, are the life for science, for nature and the love for humanity and general. I thank my colleagues for the wonderful lectures and presentation. Such a huge concentration of creativity and science gives grounds to conclude that humanity has a good chance to continue its existence. I'm convinced that the project of the Summerfield School will become a platform, not only scientific and educational experiences, but also will be a powerful platform for the practical implementation of environmental projects related to the issues of sustainable development considered in the summer school. In this context, it is important, in my opinion, to involve representatives of the business environment, environment, which today requires the quality research and practical advice. One of the activities of this project may be the opening of a business platform that would promote the best practices and the best product samples which contains an environmental or organic component and would help to find common interest and interest between stakeholders. A side direction of the platform might to the organization of education, training and workshop related to the economic, technological and environmental components that dissemination of unique practices and more. Thank you, the partner of Grassroots Institute and personally to Dr. Hazrat for the excellent organization and of a large scale project. Returning to the topic of tourism, I would like to invite you to visit our city Kamennis Podirske and State Agrarian and Engineering University in Podilla, where I and my colleagues are happy to live and welcome. I wish everyone positive emotion and thank you for attention. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Now I would like to proceed with like other special panelists that haven't raised their hands, but I will call you out and if you are ready to speak, we will be very pleased. And Professor Hafiz Muminjanov, if you are here, you're welcome to give your comments on the output. Okay, looks like not. Then I I would call, like, I would like to invite the Professor Dr. Hans Peter Nachnebel, if he is here for us. Okay, looks like no. Then I suggest that we proceed with Doctor Stefano Duglio. I have seen you in chat. So could you please take your time to share your outputs? Okay, Doctor Stefano Duglio. Okay, then I suggest to give and to give a word and to welcome the next special panelist, Doctor Didier Bazille. If you are with us and you would like to share your valuable outputs, we will be happy to do, to hear that. Okay, then I suggest, Doctor Sunchai Swami, right? You've got your hand raised. So yeah, please, please, it's a great pleasure to have you.
Well, thank you, Professor Didier. Friends, very good evening to all of you present on this platform and in this important session. At the outset, let me salute the Dr. Hazrat for his excellent leadership skills and excellent organization of this, you can say, ten days Summerfield School. Friends, I would like to just raise two, three points without wasting much time because previous speakers, they have raised almost all the significant things. My just one point to Dr. Hazrat is that to create, you can say, the better network, can we have branches or chapters of Grassroots Institute in the different countries, particularly in the mountain areas? And can we organize this Summerfield School by the, you can say, assistance of these chapters on rotational basis in different countries? Because you know, particularly our region, my region, this north eastern, north eastern India, we have mega biodiversity hotspots, we have the highest rainfall throughout the world and it's very rich in biodiversity. So we would also like to, you can say, to join this type of programs. And this is the one suggestion. Then second thing is that can we include the farmers or mountain dwellers from this area just to interact, just to raise their, you can say, the recent issues, recent problems, so that we can have better understanding about those problems and we can go for the, you can say, innovative solutions. Then the third thing is that mountain areas particularly nowadays, we are facing a lot of, you can say, the problems. At one side, the people from the plain areas, they are just coming for tourism purpose. But at the same time, the mountain persons, they are migrating because the mountain areas have so many types of problems. And even they are willing to have a, you can say, receptionist job in metropolitan cities initiatives of doing the agriculture or allied activities or other type of jobs in the mountain area itself. So this is very big problems. Pressure on mountain areas or resort mountain resources is very much increasing. And of course, some previous presenters have raised the question that the conflict over resources is going to be increased. So how we can manage the hill resources and diversities in better way for that? We have to, you can say, the real experience from those areas. And for that, we can organize this summer school or other activities in, you can say, particularly in those areas. So that the participant can have a better idea about the different type of culture and diversity. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, doctor. Now I would like to invite Hafiz Muminjanov. Looks like you have joined us and it will be, it will be a great honor for us to hear your comments and your valuable outputs, please.
Thank you very much, Didier. You know, we are living in the virtual world these days and many meetings, many events are happening. So my sincere congratulations and thanks to Dr. Hazrat, to the team of Grassroots Institute, to all facilitators, to all speakers who devoted their private time, most of them, to attend the sessions, to present the outputs of the studies, the research papers and excellent presentations, excellent lectures. So I also would like to go to mention about the positive side of this lockdown or having virtual events that allowed to gather so many well-known speakers, researchers under one umbrella in the forum. And also, we had many, many attendees who benefited from the presentation. So once again, my sincere congratulations and thanks appreciation to everybody. So a few proposals maybe for the next summer school. First of all, most of you have learned that FAO has opened a new global action on green development for special agro products, one country, one priority product. So this global initiative will be working in three geographical areas. First of all, is tropics, dry land and mountains. So there is a ground also for us to collaborate. So also, we would see possibility of having some video videos classes or video courses maybe based on the materials already gathered. So also, it would be, it would be useful to have the courses, next courses, to arrange translation in the next courses, maybe to cover more audience. Also, we were touching mainly, let's say, environmental sciences, biologies, ecology, but also it would be good to consider other subjects like economics in the mountains area, social issues, administration, management, food chain or governance, this would be very, very important also. So in the next, next schools also, maybe if there would be, even if we would be allowed to travel, I still would propose to keep at least a hybrid format of events to cover more countries, to have more participants. So from our side, from FAO, I would be advocating for the Grassroots Institute, for your summer schools and also will raise awareness and try to enroll more colleagues who can contribute in the future courses. Thank you very much and congratulations again.
Thank you. We really appreciate that you managed to join and find the time out. Thank you. Now I suggest that we proceed with like the other speakers, if you don't mind. I would try to call you out. I have checked that some of the special panelists are currently absent in the chat, so I haven't checked them all, so I suggest to call you out by name. So Dr. Omukatel, like if you're here with us, we would be really eagerly waiting for your comments.
Yeah, hello. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, everybody. Okay, so thanks to the technology, thank you organizer, the entire team for successful conduct of this summer school, very important summer school, and it was very interesting. I just have basically two points to share and by the way, it is my opinion to share this with this, the forum. Number one, when you look at, when you deal with mountain resources, we also need to think about the practices, the beliefs, the way people deal with the resource and they practice conservation of the resources. So probably we also need to look at from the anthropological, sociological perspective of resources management. Because how people believe and then how they practice actually makes a lot of difference. So that is one point. Second point, I would like to share is that when you talk about mountains, I think one of the themes of this session is also mountain sustainability. So when, there are a lot of things talked about mountain sustainability. But I rarely, you know, hear and then rarely get to learn about organization in mountains.
Looks like there are some technical issues. Yeah, now you're back, please.
Okay, so the second point is organization in mountain, that is very important and probably when we talk about, discuss about the organization in mountain, I was thinking can we have that, you know, reasonable comparison between like Africa mountains and Africa mountains in Asia, mountains in Latin America, that's second point. And third point is, one of my colleague was asking, okay, you have a summer school, you are listening to this lecture. Now, basically, you need to talk to the policymakers and then how do you make a decision? And then how do you actually convince, you know, these policymakers, basically translating this knowledge? There's a lot of knowledge, but how do you actually translate this to policy? And then so that policy can actually guide the people into practice? So these are the three, three points I'd like to share. Thank you very much. Back to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now I would like to proceed with the next special panelist, Dr. Abdul Samat Ibrahim. I checked that you're here with us in the chat, so if you are ready to give the talk, please. Okay, I would like to invite the next special panelist, Ms. Kulipia Ahmadova. Like, if you are here.
Some of these here.
Yeah, yeah, Dr. Hazrat. Okay, Samat, yeah, Dr. Samat is here with us, right?
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, now we can see you. Yeah, please, please. It's a great honor to have you. So can you please proceed?
Well, I hope I'm audible.
Well, I hope I'm audible. And it's a very warm welcome to all of you, such a sacred gathering, I would say, because environment is part of our spiritual well-being and our physical well-being and mountains are peaks of it. And if we can rise up to their level from our hearts inside, it will be a big blessing for the earth, you know. And I am at the Electronic Media Production Center of Indira Gandhi National University, have been one member of the board of university. I have a few suggestions, you know, because it's such a marvelous meeting, such a marvelous experience and such a marvelous gathering and over the week and spread over so many days, you know. I think that, you know, if there is a more sustained media effort along with it, you know, because it's all about societal intervention also, that you know, the larger canvas, the holistic picture behind all such efforts rests finally on the capability of the environment around, the environmental cause that will really take it on. So if we have a concerted effort at a media strategy, that will be very beneficial, especially in creating an advocacy around it, you know, which is, for example, that, you know, we can harness media right across with having field visits, virtual field visits, you know, especially, you know, along the experts, we could have the voices of mountain people, you know, brought to us from various countries, from various quarters through this media, you know, the, through the electronic media, through the recordings and through live participation along with it. Similarly, you know, twin events that could happen is the creation of a virtual bean congress, you know, a congress which is made of soldiers of peace and environment, reaching out to the opinion makers, you know, because ultimately the opinion makers will matter, you know, how, how the effort to save, to study, to have an academic the decision-making regarding the mountain ecosystem. So the stakeholders all should get together and have a larger congress along with it, you know, a people's participation movement along with the stakeholders. Similarly, you know, new partners that could be sought could be, that you know, you could have banks, MNCs, business-to-people partnerships, where, you know, they can rope in along for the effort, for the resources that we need. Of course, if we approach banks of each country, the multinational corporations there, the businessmen there, leading businessmen who are the two good as, you know, into this cause and ask them to participate in it. And as we are there today, they could be given a section and of course sponsorships by them, so that the whole movement can have a larger canvas. Similarly, the new partners could be roped in in a collaboration, you know, the lawmakers, you know, legislators, the governments of the various countries and the states involved, you know, the new legislations that are required in the area, plus, you know, the very importance of those people around us, the lawmakers, you know, so an interaction with them and the presence of them solicited through the advocacy group, you know. Similarly, the issues of one earth, not chance to save it, could, is a contemporary issue and if you could link it to the COVID disaster and the experience, you know, it, we, we have an empathetic understanding of the whole situation. So if we dive into the empathy that is available in terms of the COVID experience and link it up to the environment need to rise up to the challenge of saving the mountains and understanding them better, I think whole mountain mission would be carried forward to schools, colleges and universities particularly.
And there also. Hey, Dr. Samad, we really appreciate your elaborate commands. Could you please finalize into like 10 seconds?
Oh my, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Now I would like to invite Stefano Douglio, who has joined us, so please.
Thank you so much, I'm so sorry, when you called me, everything went down and now I'm here. Well, I will take one minute for thanking the organizer for inviting me. I found this summer school very well organized, especially because we were able to discuss mountains, let me say, with different viewpoints and under different perspectives. On the other hand, being a researcher in the field of management and economics, if I can share with you a couple of suggestions for future events, I would stress a little bit more the concept of mountain economy, because we have seen mountain economies scattering in the different panels. It may be of interest for the learners and the teachers, academics as well to, to discuss mountain economies in a specific panel, both in terms of economic implication of mountain activities and in terms of use of the different mountain resources, how those resources are actually used. It may be for boosting the involvement of students, we, we can speculate on limiting a little bit the timing for the presenters in order to stimulate a debate among the, among all the people involved in the different panel sessions. So, so that also students can share their ideas, their knowledge, what they can, what they can take home as a message from each different panel. So many thanks indeed for the opportunity to share my ideas and so sorry for the inconvenience.
Thank you, thank you very much. That's a great, like honor for that you, to manage to join, so thank you. Now I suggest to proceed with the next special panelist, Professor Vishmambar Prasad Sati. Like, could you please?
Yes, thank you very much for inviting me. And before going to give very specific suggestions for the grassroots institutes and also for the other organizers, I would like to acknowledge my thanks to the grassroots institutes and also mainly Dr. Hazrat for, for this great and unique initiative and which will be continued in the future also. Because why it is unique, first time under this COVID-19 phenomena, this nine days virtual program is going on, will be completed today. So it is very unique program. And congratulations to all of you, you yourself also, because I saw you in the first day and today also. So all the team of the grassroots institutes, I congratulate to them. I have one very specific suggestions that because of the global warming and climate change phenomena, the mountain regions particularly facing lots of problem in terms of that agro-ecology, ecological point of view. So many, the, many this crop species, they have been vanished and many are on the verge of vanishing because of this global warming. So my point of view is that we can also initiate this agro-ecological point of view, some training program we can provide to the next coming session, coming grassroots this program in 2023. And then a very specific sessions in term particularly on the mountain regions, because you know that this agriculture is one of the very, very important component of the human being and mountain people facing lots of problem, they are under poverty also. And because of this climate change phenomenon, lots of changes in the cropping pattern coming up. So if we can put some training program or something, some useful things for this, by this agro ecosystem in the mountain region, it will be useful. I will not take much of your time, thank you very much.
Thank you, we really appreciate your comments. And I would like to ask the participants that looks like they haven't joined, like Ms. Kulipat Matava, I have checked she is not in the chat, but just in case, I would like to check it. And Dr. Deirdre Bazil. Okay, Dr. Abid Hussain shared with us the comments on the bad connection. So he shared in the chat his vision. And the last call for Ms. Najma Ballarbi. Looks like she is not present here, but she will be in the end. So now to sum it all up, I would like to invite our respected chair, who asked for like 10 minutes, five, 10 minutes of summing up all these speeches. But from me personally, I would like to share my greatest appreciation of all of you sharing your valuable opinion. And it's always does take the very important role in achieving the goals that the community has and dealing with the challenges of the present. So thank you very much for being open and for be, being able to find the time out, to be here and to share your vision. So respected chair. Okay.
Thank you very much. I, as I asked earlier to, to speak at the end and listening to all these wonderful suggestions and appreciations which all, we all share, I just wanted to suggest something concrete, maybe out of the blue, some people would say. And I would like to do it in a, in a, just a small PowerPoint, which I, I would like to show, I hope I can, I can do it right away. Let me just to see if I reach my PowerPoint, because it disappeared. Just, I don't know where it is now. Share. Let me see, do it again, open it again, perhaps. Okay, do you see my PowerPoint?
Not yet, not yet.
Okay, I don't, wait, let's see.
Sir, sir, please, please click the share screen.
Yeah, yeah, well, I am trying to, yeah, share the screen. Well, I am doing share screen, but I don't know why it doesn't work. I don't know. Okay, I guess, I guess I would not be capable of doing it for whatever reason I don't understand. And my PowerPoint, I see it at the same time. I am also visible, but I don't understand why my screen is not shared. Well, you don't see my screen, no?
No problem, sir, you can, you can just speak, weaving your presentation on the computer, just.
Now we can see, yeah, yeah, now we can see.
Okay, that's great, that's great. I, I would like to just have a few suggestion to talk, because I have worked more than 20 years on agricultural heritage systems and created the program, conceptualized the program and worked for so many years in so many countries with so many partners, not only in terms of designation and all the process, but also political process within FAO. So I would say that the whole concept of agriculture heritage actually came to me from inspiration that I had in mountain areas. I am a mountain boy, I, my name is Ku Afghan, it means the master of the mountain. So mountain is for me is a very special place. And starting with the agricultural heritage, we started in mountain areas in China, in Peru, in Chile, in some other countries. Now, what I would like to do is just to say that since world is full of so many wonderful mountains and many of them endangered, many of the people who are living there are endangered. So let's think about, reflect about how can we use agricultural, mountain agriculture heritage concept within this context and use this concept and this program of FAO, which I hope would be also appreciating this whole thing, somehow bring together these grassroots institute plus all the institutions which have been working and collaborating to suggest some of the new mountain heritage systems and particularly do some studies, some research, a young generation in order to take care of these mountains, to go more in depth, to look at the, the situation of their mountain and their ecosystems. So this is an idea that would, I would like to share with you. Now, many mountain areas could be considered mountain agriculture because they have passed the test of time, a unique inheritance that should be preserved and allowed to evolve. Mountain agriculture system exemplify the convergence between food and livelihood security, biological diversity, indigenous knowledge, cultural agriculture and landscape diversity, which are also the criteria for globally important agriculture heritage system. The mountain diversity itself is a major resource for poverty alleviation, food security and climate change resilience. So I really think mountain areas are the heritage of the mankind. And to work on that, we need to look at the common needs like employment generation and product development, continued conservation of biological diversity and agro ecosystem, landscape, market identification and development for diversity, reach products, mountain management policy formulation, public awareness, training, education, information, communication. These are some areas that which has been discussed very deeply in these courses. But I think organizing it in, under these topics and under the concept of mountain agriculture heritage would probably help in a, in a more concrete way to address the problem of mountain. Now, my vision is some kind of dynamic conservation of mountain agriculture heritage system with their multiple goods and services. And I would suggest that we put a mission to identify, support, safeguard mountain agriculture heritage system and their livelihood, agricultural and associated biodiversity, knowledge system, culture and landscape around the world. How to do it at global level by identification, selection, recognition of mountain heritage system, at national level by capacity building in policy, regulatory and incentive mechanism to safeguard this outstanding system? And at local level by empowerment of local community and providing technical assistance, promoting traditional knowledge, enhancing viability of these system through economic incentives like labeling the food, payment for environmental services, agrotourism, et cetera, which in many of the occasions in this nine days were discussed. We need, of course, investing in all assets of rural people, not only natural capital, which is their mountain, physical mountain, but also in human capital, social capital, but particularly in physical capital, because we don't have infrastructure, roads, markets in mountain area, so we need. And just financial capital, of course, money and saving. Now, I go very quickly. By discovering the mountain heritage, we will discover biological diversity, ecosystem diversity, cultural diversity, culinary diversity and curative diversities. These are the diversities which mountains are offering to us. Using agroecological strategies, one of the suggestion I wanted to make is, let's bring agroecology among the courses, among the, the topic of the grassroots training the next 2023. That is a very, very important subject area which we need to really make aware of not only young, young people, but also mountain people themselves, because these are the really the heritage agriculture systems. Of course, it has a modern name, agroecological strategies, but it is very, very close to what mountain people are doing. Then of course, food heritage is very, very important. In many of Chinese mountain areas, there are hundreds of type of food with hundreds of the products, which are really wonderful. wonderful uh to make to know to all people around the world. Now, there is research gap, particularly in mountain area, market research and value chain, product development research, product diversification, connecting mountain agriculture to their cultural values and food heritage, exploring the use of innovation tool like crowdsourcing, because nowadays everywhere practically around the world, uh most of the farmers or at least part of the farmers have uh smartphones. And these smartphones are wonderful to register what they have as heritage. As I discussed it uh in my presentation, particularly talking about uh registering farmers heritage uh through Ag Legacy, which is an application. We have not gone very far because of the COVID, but this is a wonderful tool that farmers can not only uh register their heritage, register their asset, register what it is valuable for them, but also communicate with each other the communities, members with scientific communities, and if there are problems uh to be actually shared and and solved, including the market opportunities. Thank you very much. Uh these are my suggestions. I hope, hope we can discuss this uh in another uh occasion. Particularly, Dr. Hasrat, I would like to discuss with you and how can the uh manage uh the program which is more concrete addressing these issues which I uh just briefly mentioned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Professor. On behalf of the organizers, I would like to express our great appreciation to you, uh Professor Povris and all the special panelists for taking the time to speak to us. Your insights into the perspectives of the future of the Summerfield School, your vision of the expansion of the future collaboration, as well as the development of mountain sub-disciplines and addressing contemporary issues, they are of great significance. And now I would sorry, okay. And now I would like to open the floor for all the esteemed audience to share your views, opinions and ideas on Summerfield School. The overall time for this part uh was expected to be twenty-five minutes, so I would like to ask the speakers uh who would be willing to talk uh to kindly manage your speech within two minutes. If you're willing to speak, uh please click raise hand in the reaction icon in the Zoom and I will invite you. If there anybody willing to comment. We could see, we could see one, not the special panelists who have been with us uh like since the beginning of the special panelist session. Uh okay, now we cannot see. Um, okay. We highly appreciate your opinions and would you be really happy to know them all? Okay, so um looks like
I think please, I think please invite again and again this audience. Because we have uh like half an hour time left for for the audience.
Okay, um. I, yeah, 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 I still don't see the hands. So I cannot see anybody willing uh to share. So Dr. Hasrat, if you can see anybody uh like I see no hands, risen?
Nobody, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, anyway, we will be eagerly waiting for any of the comments in the Google Chat group. So uh like anybody who uh will be willing to share their opinions or outputs are welcome to share uh them in the Google Chat group.
Uh can you please just see again the panelist list if anybody was left?
Uh yeah, yeah, sure. Uh I have
Dr. Abid Hussein, I can see him.
Uh I can see, yeah, Dr. Abid Hussein. Uh while he uh mentioned in the chat that his connection is uh poor. Uh like, uh let me, let me invite him if he can join.
Hello.
Yeah, hi, hi. Great, great to see you, yeah.
You so much. So I have already given my suggestion. That suggestion, I think, very important. Being engaged in research and with policymakers also, I think it's always important to give the proper orientation to participants about the chain. I will call it knowledge chain. We create science or knowledge researchers. Then we convey this or communicate this science and knowledge to practitioners or policymakers through communication tools. As one of our colleague, Abdul Samad, he mentioned, then come the role of communication tools or media. I think it's good to give proper orientation and understanding on science, policy and practice interface. So for that purpose, I think maybe in future summer schools, uh there has to be more focus on specific issues. Under this broader umbrella, it's already covered in this ecosystems theme. Several issues are covered. I must congratulate. It's a huge task and very successfully done by Dr. Hasrat and team. But in future, specific focus uh through bringing together policymakers, practitioners, researchers and with the lens of interdisciplinarity. So that will actually matter and that will be much more depth and understanding to participants. Not only focusing on researchers. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for being able uh to join despite all of the technical issues. And uh like the last call out for to um panel, special panelists, uh Professor, Dr. Hans Peter Nachnebel. Uh like I've checked that he is not present, but just in case, uh let me confirm that. Okay, and Dr. Didier Brazil. Okay, and the uh like the last one, Ms. Kuleybak Matova. Okay, looks like they are not uh present, but I'm sure that they uh will uh share with us their output as uh it has been requested. And uh then in this case, if the audience, if uh those who do not belong to the list of the special panelists, uh if there is nobody now for now to uh like to talk, uh we can proceed uh with uh uh giving the word to Ms. Najma Bilarby. Oh, okay, I can see one hand. Yeah, okay, I can see one hand from the audience. So uh please, it's like a great honor for me to invite you. So uh uh Nisli Hamdal, can you please? It's uh it's, yeah, we really appreciate your talk, so please.
Hello, everybody. Uh I am Nisli Hamdal from Turkey. Uh first of all, I would like to thank the Grassroots Institute for giving us uh this opportunity. Uh mountains are vulnerable areas uh which include different ecosystems. Uh there are different mountains description in very uh every country. Uh I am doing my PhD studies at Istanbul uh University Department of Geography and trying to specify quantitative mountains description for Turkey. Uh once again, uh I would like to thank all lectures uh who give us inspiration with their presentation. Uh thanks for all.
Thank you, thank you. Probably somebody else would like to uh share with us their opinions or any kind of big man, dear audience. Uh now it's the floor for you to speak, so uh please. Okay, uh Dr. Hasrat, it looks like it's either will take some time for the people to join or they are kind of uh, oh, okay. Arub uh Hakhwari, like, would you like, would you like to uh share your uh comments?
Okay, uh very good evening to all. Uh currently my network is too bad, so I won't be able to share my video screen. Uh first of all, I would like to thank Russell Institute for organizing this wonderful Summerfield School program. And I would like to thank all the speakers for this, I like this wonderful sessions and for all these days that we have been together. Uh it was a great experience. And it was uh my first ever uh international event that I was part of, so I will always remember this one. And uh I am very much thankful to Dr. Hasrat, uh Lucy Madam, Naval Jan for taking care of my works that I was part of it. So, so thank you so much, Summerfield School and all the organizers for making this even happen. So thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for sharing like such a warm words with us. Thank you. It's a great pleasure to hear it. And uh thanks. And uh for the closing of the today's special session, it was uh planned to be Ms. Najma Bilarby uh to give her comments while uh she is likely to be absent without uh like here. Uh so please, Dr. Hasrat, uh I would like to give you the words to finalize our session.
I think a lot, a lot of, lot of ideas have already come. The Chair Professor Povis has summed up and he has given strategic direction. All the panelists have given their uh wonderful inputs. There are certain critical points. I have also noted down nearly fifteen different concrete ideas uh suggested by the panelists. Uh although there are demand, I might have missed something uh as well, so I don't know. Anyway. So thank you uh everyone who has contributed this success to of this program, to the success of this program and devoting a lot of time, uh lot of energy, knowledge, sharing the knowledge and uh spending uh the resources as well. So uh, thank you, everyone, uh respective of the fact that I will, I will name everybody. Uh once again, I had given in my presentation hinted who uh were the critical stakeholders who have really um supported this venture. Uh lastly, last point is that uh just an announcement that we have been uh running the journals. One of our journal is the Web of Science and we will improve uh within these next coming three months. We will, we already have very good engagement, nice engagement with the Web of Science. And uh our other journals will also be uh indexed very soon by the Web of Science. So uh those who are the researchers and the practitioners and they have the uh they write the, the, the the, the articles, the papers, so they can, they can submit and then we will see. Okay, this is just an announcement anyway. So though the delegates particularly uh have been asking again and again how they will get the certificate. As we had committed in the beginning that all the delegates, participants will get the certificates. Um, those who were nominated by our partners and collaborators will get these certificates without any payment. This is the, our, this was our commitment, so it is there. So uh many people are asking by the emails and like our country, although we had very, very clearly, very clearly communicated just in the beginning and circulated the notes very clearly uh with the instructions. Okay. Uh regarding the learner participants, we had opened the window that they will can also get the certificate, but their certificate will definitely be little different from the uh delegate parts, delegate participant certificate will explicitly uh mention the title of the paper they had presented here and contributed to the summer school. So that will be mentioned in the certificate, but for the learner participants, there won't be any such kind of the mentioning. So uh moreover, there may be little other difference too. For learner participants, it's a payment process. Uh the reason being that learner participant is choosing the option not to contribute academically uh to the summer school in the way of presenting the abstract or the paper. So they had skipped this option. That's why uh the, I mean, the one person can enjoy only one benefit. Not all the benefits can be enjoyed by one person. So either you enjoy this liberty of not, you know, doing any labor work or the hard work for presenting anything. Uh if you are opting this option, then you have to pay. So uh this is the option. So this was just a kind of uh announcement for, for the faculties also, we had committed that all the faculties will be given a separate certificate. Uh so you will receive that. Thank you so much, uh everyone, and we will be communicating. All are open to communicate in the Google group. And also if any personal issues or some private issues, then you can uh definitely send the emails to us, so we will definitely. Uh we will be uh in touch with everyone. The information uh on the website is there. Please explore the website once again. Many, many people were confused. The link is very straight. You just uh type the website URL, you will be there. Just go into the summer school, you will have a notice uh in front of you and on the bottom of the notice, you will have two critical links. One is program plan, another is list of participants. All the participants list their phone numbers, their email IDs, everything, whatever the information they had shared and which was not confidential has been put on the website on this particular page. And even there, the delegates, participants, papers, their profiles, their, you know, abstract, and also the published paper will also be put on there on, on that particular page. So the all information is there. You read about uh the people if somebody is interested. And similarly about the faculty members, there is the information. Plenty of, you just click, go onto the program, plan, plan page. Now we have put the uh all the links of the each day, day one, day two, day three, I mean session group one, session group two, session group three. So just click there and you will land on to that particular page where you have the list of the lectures, the link of the lecturer. Uh and then in front of the each lecture, there are the nine different files attached. So whatever the files we are receiving, we are attaching one by one. And uh very shortly, I mean by the mid of October, we'll be able to upload all the videos which we have recorded of each and every speech uh and other interventions, presentations. Uh for day one, I mean the session group one, more, all the videos almost are uploaded on YouTube, but slowly, slowly we will upload all the videos there. Uh we will, we will share all the links later on and you, uh what whosoever is interested can also explore it. So uh information is there, everything is there. And please, please do not write, still do not write. I mean uh very petty questions, which you can easily search the information and thus you are burdening. Some people, especially the youngsters, they burden us for the see, I mean, very petty questions which they can easily find the information, but they ask us what time my, my presentation is, what time, where is the link, what is this? I mean, the young generation is very well IT uh benign and they are not able to find, so this is this should be improved, I think. And yes, finally, thank you so much for everyone. And if we have hurt anybody, this is that my last statement. If I personally, if I have hurt anybody, I have uh been harsh to anybody. So this was just a coincidence. There was no intention behind it to target anybody. This might be because of the pressure, because of all this. And sometimes the uh, I mean And sometimes the uh, I mean, I also interpret in the, in the, uh the people's communication in a different context. So that would have happened. So I apologize for that, especially me, because my nature, my behavior is uh hard. So I, I, I'm really sorry for this. So thank you so much. We will have a very good relationship in the future. We will have, we will cultivate and do something together. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hasrat, for all the clarification. And they think that no need to apologize, because the organization, the organizing of such a went is like always a great pressure, pressure. And uh well, its level of organizing was undoubtedly on the highest, like was the highest. So as a moderator, I would like one more time to thank you all and the esteemed special panelists and participants and the respected chair for uh your amount's contribution to the Summerfield School. And on behalf of the organizers, I would like to underline that we will be looking forward to the future cooperation that will definitely contribute to finding effective solutions to the challenges of the present and the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Bye bye. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you very much for the insights.
One, one minute, one minute, my son, my son who, one minute, one minute, please, my son likes to say hi.
Yeah, yeah. He was saying papa, papa sometimes.
My son who is operating the Zoom is saying hi to everyone.
Yeah, hi from our side.
Hi, hi. Greatest appreciation.
What's, what's his name?
Immense job.
Yeah. What's his name?
Dr. Hasrat, what is the name of your son? We have a question.
He, he is Imaad. He is Imaad. Imaad is pillar.
Oh. So we'll remember, we, we'll remember Imaad for his contribution also.
Yeah, it's a great contribution, really. And he's the backbone of the Zoom platform. So congratulations, Imaad, for your lovely contribution.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Now we will shut down the system. We will shut down the system.
And we'll meet again. Yeah, yeah, sure.
Thank you, everyone.